Yeah.
With everything else going on, the letters finally went out this morning.
Oh, really?
From last month.
They shut down the thing.
Last month.
Oh, come on.
Hmm?
And you don't get on call.
Hello? Soon as the public calls in, says what's going on.
Same thing with me, yeah.
I was signing in again.
So swipe up, go back this way.
Are we? All right. I guess we're live. We're calling a regular meeting in the New York City Council for Tuesday, July second, two thousand nineteen, at four thirty P M. The order, first item on the agenda is your consent agenda items, what's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those three items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items, any discussion on any? See a none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Item number two, temporary on sale liquor license for the New York area Catholic schools incorporated, and that's for September first, September twenty first, two thousand nineteen.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? See a none, on favor say aye.
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 Pose no, motion carries. Item two point two, raffle gambling permit, and that's for New York area Catholic schools for Monday, August fifth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? See a none, on favor say aye.
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 Pose no, motion carries. Item two point three, offside bingo gambling permit, and that's for the Brown County Fairgrounds for August eighth, Thursday, August eighth, and Friday, August ninth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second offered a resolution, waive the reading, and a permit is for the Searls Baseball Association. Any more discussion? See a none, finance director, please call a row.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item three point one, Harold, oh, got a tough one on there. Emirato, or something like that.
That's pretty good.
Interim use permit, and that's for seven eighteen North Broadway. Go ahead, John.
All right. This is the first interim use permit application that the city council will be hearing. So I'd like to go through kind of the details of this project that we're working on. So the legal description of this property is lot ten, block seventy-three, north of Center Street. Property is generally located east of North Broadway and north of Seventh North Street. The subject property is currently zoned R two, that's single and two-family residential zoning district. And the comprehensive plan does designate the property for medium-density residential land uses. Joining the property to the north and east is zoned R two, and then to the west and south, R two, and B two, B two being the business service district. So being this is the first request for this city's interim use permit, I'd also like to go through what the intent of an interim use permit actually is, since we adopted this ordinance of April this year. So the intent of this interim use permit is to allow a land use for a limited period of time that reasonably utilizes the property in a manner that is not otherwise consistent with the comprehensive plan, nor permitted in the applicable zoning district. It's also to provide the city with a reasonable degree of discretion in determining the suitability of certain designated uses and at certain times for specified zoning districts. In addition, it's allow, it's to allow the use that is presently acceptable, but not permitted within the zoning district, and with that, and with anticipated development may not be acceptable in the future, or to allow a temporary use of a property until a particular date, until the occurrence of a particular event, or until zoning regulations no longer permit it. The applicant's proposed use of the property does not meet the definition of a home occupation, since it is not of a service character and utilized, and utilizes an accessory building. Otherwise, what this normally would be if it was a home occupation in that zoning district, it would be a conditional use permit. So some of the primary, primary issues to consider is that the approval of an interim use permit application requires the city, requires the city to find that conditions can be established to ensure all of the following criteria will always be met. So the use will not adversely impact nearby properties through nuisance, noise, traffic, dust, or odor, or unsightliness, and will not otherwise adversely impact public health, safety, and the welfare of the community. Use will not adversely impact the implementation of the comprehensive plan. The date, event, or change in circumstances that will terminate the use is reasonable and can be identified with certainty. The applicant will sign a consent agreement. The applicant agrees to all the conditions the city council deems appropriate to allow the use, including a condition that the landowner may be required to provide appropriate financial security to cover the cost of removing an interim use in any interim structures on the expiration of the use of that permit. The proposed use will not hinder permanent development of the site. The use will not create an excessive burden on existing parks, schools, streets, or other public facilities which will serve or are proposed to serve the area. Adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and necessary facilities have been or will be provided. Permission of the use will not impose additional costs on the public if it's necessary for the public to take the property in the future, and the use will not cause or impose additional costs to the city. The applicant's responses to all that criteria is found on page two. Sorry, you guys not hearing, can you hear me fine on this? Okay. All the, all the answers to the applicant, the applicant answered to those criteria are found on page two of the interim use permit application. So it was a recommendation of the planning commission to approve with conditions for the following reasons. The applicant, or the application does comply with the review criteria found in section nine point two-two subdivision five of the city code. It's anticipated that there's going to be limited traffic on this site for this business at the residence, since most of the business is actually done online. There's an adequate amount of off-street parking on the applicant's property. The applicant intends to only operate the business out of the residence and garage for a limited duration. And the applicant has already installed dust control measures in the garage for the woodworking portion of his business. So the conditions that they recommended was that the applicant agrees to sign the consent agreement with the city. Interim, interim use permit approval is for a period of three years from the date of city council approval. The applicant shall not operate the woodworking business on the premises outside the hours of seven A M. to seven P M. Monday through Friday, and then nine A M. to nine P M. Saturday and Sunday. The applicant will ensure the dust collection system in the garage during business hours is operating and, and in order and functioning properly as provided by the system manufacturer's requirements. And the sign on the property, property shall not exceed two feet. Business operations will not generate noise that violates sections eight point oh eight and nine point one-two subdivision eight, part two, or part B two of the city code. And customer parking will only take place on the applicant's property and not in the alley right of way or in any neighboring properties. The applicant will pay the cost to record the permit and consent agreement with the county recorder's office, and then he will also comply, or they will also comply with all other regulations found in section point nine, section point nine two-two of the city code. So, I know that was a mouthful, but I wanted to go through that because this is the first time we've gone through this, and it's different from a conditional use permit in the fact that conditional use permits don't have an end date. This one does have an end date, so it's, it's a little bit different process for us in the city. If you go through the attachments, you can see the application. Then we have an aerial photo showing the Emiratos' property and then other businesses or properties around that area. We also have a zoning map attached, as well as a layout of, of the applicant's property, and then photos of the interior and exterior of that property. The Emiratos are here and present and are willing to answer any questions you might have for them specifically.
John, I want, oh, I just have one, John, on the application, strictly family run, right? No employees?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
John, you said seven, the operating business time would be seven A M. to seven P M. I read seven A M. to ten P M. in this document.
Well, then I must have misread it, it's, it's what's found in city code, so it's, it is.
I read ten P M. somewhere.
Yeah, it says ten. It's the hours of seven A M. until ten P M. Monday through Friday, and then nine A M. to nine P M. Saturday and Sunday.
So could we talk a little bit about what kind of noise this garage is going to make? Could you talk a little bit about that? Could you come up to the counter and just talk about? I'm nervous about the noise about wood cutting in the residential area, if people have kids and, and that kind of stuff. So tell us a little bit about your business.
Well.
I first got to introduce yourself for the record and.
Okay, so I'm Harold Emirato. So I'm the applicant for this business, for the permit for this business. Yes, the noise does one of the, the main things that we are, you know, thinking about, but we got, it's not that heavy, heavy duty machine that we run in my, in my garage because, you know, we don't have a huge production, and we try to make all the cuts during the day because we are the ones who are closer to the garage, and we got twin babies too. So, and they go to bed at seven, and, you know, we try to be quiet after that. And actually, I just work during the night a few days when I got some products to deliver, probably pretty soon, you know, the deadline is pretty soon. But basically, I work till seven, seven or eight P M., you know. But then the dust collector system doesn't make any noise. It makes the noise that a normal fan in a room will make. And I have the garage all the time closed because the humidity inside the garage, we need to control that because of wood, so there is not any noise or dust getting out of the garage. So it's all the time closed and.
What are you making in there?
Furnishers like that, yeah. So what we do is basically metal and wood furnitures, and we sell those online. And we have some clients in the Twin Cities too. I'm an architect, and I work in an office in Minneapolis. I go there every, every Monday. So sometime we got some orders for those peoples, and then we produce, you know, we do custom orders, or we have our own design. Those are our own designs, and we sell those online. So that's basically what we do, a small piece that we can chip, and, you know, when they pass office or UPS or stuff like that. Yeah.
So I think we're having technology problems because we don't have any screens going here, so I don't think anybody is seeing any of this other than us. But, okay. So most of your wood cutting is done during the day?
Yes.
And do we, did we notify, none of these?
There's nothing to see.
Sure there is, there's all kinds of stuff to see.
You're looking at it.
Oh, okay. Are you? Is there a lot of neighbors in your neighborhood with small kids? Or homes with a lot of small kids in the neighborhood?
Nope. And we, we don't have kids. The next door doesn't have kids, and the other guy either, so, yeah.
I'd love to say that out of everybody in our neighborhood, I'm probably the guest about the noise, because I stay at home with my twin babies, and if it's loud, I'm the one that's in the garage telling them. And really, we, we found that, I think part of it is because we live on Broadway, and there's so much noise with the traffic anyways.
Yeah, yeah.
Because in our old house, I, I could hear it, but in this house, I can't hear anything. There's only one machine that we decided that we could hear, and we know with that particular machine that it has to be done during reasonable hours.
Uh huh.
And that's for cutting metal.
Yeah.
And actually, most of the time, it's not a tool that we use all that often.
Uh huh. And we are getting a, a new machine for that because now we are using the blade, like the chop cutter, cutter. So we are going to go with a band cutter for metal, so that's really quiet.
Do we notify the neighbors, and they had an opportunity? Do we hear anything from any of the neighbors? All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Anybody have any more questions?
Hey, Steph?
Thank you.
Yeah. Nice furniture.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Do you ship all over the world, I would assume, or all over the country?
Yes. We got people for, actually, like, two weeks ago, people for friends looking at us, and H G T V producers, so, yeah.
Good for you, good luck on your business.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Anything else, John, you need to brief this on?
Okay. See a none, and I had to entertain a resolution.
I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving with conditions the application of Harold Emirato requesting an interim conditional use permit to allow the operation of the woodworking business in his residence and detached garage at seven eighteen North Broadway.
Second. We have a motion and a second offered a resolution, waived the reading, any more discussion? See a none, finance director, please call a row.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Good luck.
If I could ask President Schmitz a question, are you sure we're being televised to the general public? I mean, we don't have anything up on the screens.
I know.
Normally, we're there, just want to make sure that.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Okay. That's why I didn't know we were live. Thank you. We'll go, item number four point one, city manager, or let's see, update on the blight ordinance. Chris?
So this is just kind of an update to, to let everyone know where we are with the, the blight ordinance, and, and we've been meeting for a little over, about a year or so, and it was the committee's decision that the best course of action at this point in time was be to do a more active enforcement instead of a passive enforcement with, on complaint base as well. And so Chief Borkert will, will touch base on kind of what that active enforcement has looked like and compliance rates and so forth. But moving forward, we'll, we'll be looking at options for enhanced penalties, possible enhanced penalties for repeat offenders, and looking at potentially cleaning up some of the language and defining some terms that need to be defined, so it's a clear definition. But I think as of right now, the, the active enforcement is, under the current blight ordinance, is, is being very effective, as Chief Borkert will point out, and we can move forward with addressing any concerns that come up from there. Chief?
President Schmitz, members of the council, just, I'm Dave Borkert, Chief of Police. Just to give a brief update regarding the blight. You know, there's, there's two ways we enforce it. It's if someone calls in a complaint, we, we certainly always follow up on that. And then also active patrol, where we're, we're using that enforcement measure. Most of these that we're talking about today, you know, the majority of them have been through active patrolling enforcement measures. And what we do is we assign our officers to different areas of, of town. So that's been pretty effective. There's some, you know, some accountability, some follow-ups. So we have two sergeants, one, one sergeant supervises one side of town, the other one supervises the other side. And then, again, each officer, including the corporals and everything, are assigned certain sections of, of the community. As far as the numbers, our actual numbers right now is that we have a hundred and seventeen enforcement actions, with, you know, essentially, we're notices that were sent out. Out of the hundred and seventeen, pretty pleased with it. We have eighty-two that are in compliance, so approximately seventy percent compliance, which is, you know, I, I'm pleased with that. Out of, out of that hundred and seventeen, twelve received citations, so approximately ten percent received citations. And then we still have twenty-three that are, are still pending. Some of them have asked for extensions and things like that. We give the officer the discretion to, to do that in their, in their sections of town. So again, there's, there's twenty-three that are, are pending. It's kind of an ongoing deal because there's new ones that come up as, as we're going through this. But again, that's, that's the update as far as the actual numbers. And then the feedback that we've been getting, you know, and that, just like anything, it's not a, you know, we're not taking a, a survey or anything like that, scientific survey, but at the same time, we do receive feedback from the community. And overall, it's been very positive. Of course, when we're doing some enforcement measures sometimes on, on individuals, they're not real pleased because, you know, they, they may be concerned, they maybe don't think that it, it needs our attention. But, but overall, just from the general community, it's been very positive. And we've also received that they feel that, from the community, that they feel that there's been an improvement as far as, as the blight. We're always encouraging community feedback, so if there's, you know, there's an area that they think needs some attention or needs, you know, something else addressed, we're always certainly open to that, and, and I certainly encourage them to contact us. One other thing that, a, a positive side has, has been, when I reported to the council earlier on about is the neighborhood ambassador program, where we have officers assigned certain areas and, you know, doing enforcement measures like this, but also reaching out for, for others type of community involvement. That's been very positive, and this is, you know, they, they kind of know who their officer is because they're also going to be showing up at, like, national night out picnics if there's a picnic in a certain area of town. And I don't know if you recently saw the journal article where they had a, a community picnic, and, you know, the officer showed up at that and, and was able to represent our police department and our community at that, at that event. So I think that's been, been positive and been able to address certain questions as they come up regarding blight and other, other issues that, that come up. So again, I think that's been very, very positive. As far as the future, this is meant to be never-ending. You know, I mean, it's not like, you know, we're done now, you know, we've done the, the first wave, and now we're done, and, you know, don't worry about it till next year. It's meant that we're continually enforcing this. In fall, we're going to have another push, so we'll have, you know, again, it's never-ending. You know, our officers may go out tomorrow, and they might, you know, find two or three more notices that they send out, but in fall, we're going to have, you know, a, a much more focused attention again. And, you know, winter generally is a little more difficult depending on the, as far as the snow cover, but we plan on continually to do it because I think that's, I think it's important to be doing it year-round. But overall, I think things are, you know, my summary would be, my assessment would be, things are going well. So if, if there's any questions or anything, I'll certainly try to address questions or comments. Otherwise.
Do you have anything for, Dave?
Maybe just for the community, no, it's right now, we're just focusing on residential, right?
Well, we're, we're focusing on the entire community, but yeah, there's, there's, you know, probably most of the enforcement actions have been in the residential. I leave it up to the officer's discretion as far as, you know, what. When you're looking at something, it's sometimes hard to describe in words, but, you know, when the officer's there, I, I trust their discretion. Again, they're supervised by the sergeant and, you know, certainly oversight from, from the commander and myself. But yeah, we're, we're really trying to do the community, community-wide enforcement.
So are you considered, based on what you're saying, other than the twenty-three that are still kind of pending, are you considered the first wave is done throughout the whole city then? Or do you still have a couple areas that are not quite complete?
Well, yeah, I would consider that pretty much it's, it's, that first wave has, has been completed except for, you know, some of these stragglers. But again, you know, when I say that, we're, we're continually doing this. In fact, we just.
Right, exactly.
Have, have one, one of the officers, he hasn't sent out the letter, but he, he was looking into it today. So I mean, it's, it's going to be continual because I don't want people to think, oh, you know, I'm kind of like unbutton the shirt collar, everything is, is fine now. I don't have anything, anything to worry about for a while because, you know, we're going to continue to enforce this, and I think that's important. I think it should be consistent.
And what do you see as the most common violation that your officers are dealing with?
You know, each situation is, is somewhat unique, but probably just, you know, piled debris.
Junk on property type stuff?
Yeah, and, you know, everybody's, sometimes their, their definition or their description of what junk is, is different, and that's where each case is a little bit unique. But again, if you're going to look at the majority of it, it, it would involve that. Other questions or comments? Otherwise, you know, certainly, you know, always have a, I'm certainly open to any questions or comments. We'll certainly address them, and, and I also mean that as community at, at large. If there's certain areas, like, you know, they have a concern with a neighbor, or they have a concern just, you know, someone in the community, or maybe even have a question themselves. Again, we, we really encourage people to contact us.
I want to big thank you to your department. This has been a lot of work, and we did a hundred and eighteen areas that you checked up on. There's a whole lot more people that they were actually looking at, so please thank, thank your officers on our behalf because this is something we've been wanting to do for, we've been juggling this for, what, three years? So finally get us to this plate, so thank you and thank your officers.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go to item five point one, proposed change in appendix A of the bylaws of the New York Fire Department Relief Association. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. President, city councilors, Joseph Stadim, Secretary of the New York Fire Department Relief Association and Board of Trustees. Before you tonight, we have an action item to change the benefit level for the active members of the New York Fire Department. Give a brief summary of the funding valuation report and the benefit study that we had performed by Van I. Warden and Associates. The study that was prepared by Van I. Warden, we are required to do that by the state auditor every other year. And this year, with the report, we also had them perform a benefit study at the same time as a cost-saving measure and just ease, since they're in, in our account, looking at our financials as the proper time to do a study at that time as well. So the report itself gave us a funding valuation of a hundred and seventeen percent funded. So in short, that means our, our funding for pension amounts is overfunded. We have enough money to cover all of the members that are currently serving on the fire department. With the study, we looked at two different pension increases. One was a one hundred dollar increase, and the other was a four hundred dollar increase. And the study brought back a one point eight percent decrease in our funding level for every one hundred dollars we increased. So taking that information, and then along with the information that was put together by the state auditor in the two thousand seventeen report, the state auditor compiles all the data, all the data from all the relief associations throughout the state and compiles that into a financial report from all the audits that are performed. One interesting item of note from that report is the New York Fire Department Relief Association ranks in the ninety-ninth percentile for the investments that we receive through our financials. So it's something that we're pretty proud of. And then along with that information, we also looked at, in the same report by the state auditor, the funding ratios and pension levels of other fire departments similar to our size, and their rates of return as well. And looking in that report, we, we're kind of in the middle as far as the pension level. The funding ratio, we're, again, kind of in the middle. A lot of fire departments our size are overfunded as well. And like I said, with the rate of return on our investments, we rank in the ninety-ninth percentile, which ranks us near, if not the best rate of return in the state as far as investment results are concerned for relief associations. So with that information, at the June Relief Association meeting, this item was discussed, and it was decided to propose a increase of five hundred dollars per year, which would bring us to five thousand dollars per year of service for the active members. And with the discussion that revolved around the, the actuary reports that we do every other year, if this proposed increase is approved by the city council tonight, we will not be at the table next year asking for an increase at that time. We will try to keep the studies and reports in the same year to save. and reports in the same year to save funds, so we don't, so we're not doing the, the studies in the off-year, try to keep everything in the same year. So with that, I'd be, take any questions you may have, or if you need any additional information.
Anybody having questions, concerns for Joe?
I got a, just a couple, since we have thirty-nine voluntary police officers right now, voluntary police officers, riders, firefighters, excuse me, is that, are we full-staffed, are we under, are we over?
I would have to defer that answer to Fire Chief Mako.
Okay. So I know at one point, we were having some recruiting issues, and I don't know where we're at today.
Paul Mako, Fire Chief, City Council President and councilors, we're at thirty-nine members right now, I would like to see it at forty-two, of course, our recruit...
We're close.
We're close.
Okay.
Our recruiting process usually starts in August, it's a couple-month process, but this is certainly one of the tools we use for recruitment.
That was my next question, how important is this tool in recruitment?
It, it's extremely important, we, we actually, in our advertisement, we put what they will receive after twenty years of service in, in with the advertisement, because some years, we get two applicants, you know, some years, we get six, but I think on the average, we probably maybe one or two firemen a year we recruit.
My only other comment is when I looked at the number of firefighters, Joe, you said you're kind of in the medium, but you're almost in the lower end, if you take your, if we're at thirty-nine, supposed to be at forty-two, and you look at the other departments that are in the forties, there, we'd be in the low end, we wouldn't be on the, if you look at, you know, Brainerd, well, not Brainerd...
Brainerd's kind of an outlier when you come...
Yeah, well, you got Farmington at fifty-five hundred, you know, you, Fergus Falls is maybe drops down a little bit, but, but then you got Marshall at fifty-eight hundred, you got Cupman over in the seven thousand range, so I certainly will support this for what you, you said, but I think, you know, we have to always support our firefighters, we need our firefighters in this community, and we need to stay full-staffed as much as possible, and I think it could have almost been, I think I might have supported something even a little bit higher, but I'll go ahead and offer a resolution, waive the reading unless somebody else has questions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second offer resolution waived reading, any more discussion?
Just one comment I want to make, let the general public know, I'm also a retired firefighter from the city of New Ulm, this motion here is for active firefighters only, it does not affect my monthly pension plan, so I ask Roger each time, correct, I can vote on it.
It's not going to affect you.
So they know.
Yep.
Any more questions, concerns? See you none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, Joe. Item five point two, Department of Human Services grant for, for education tobacco compliance check, let's see, Dave, you got some on that?
Sure, grant, what, eight, eight hundred dollars?
President Schmitz, members of the council, Dave Borkert, Chief of Police, City of New Ulm, yeah, we've, we're asking for permission to, to receive the, the check, we had, we've done the compliance check, it turned out very well, we did it on, on June twelfth, we, this one is, is geared towards education, we'd like to do something similar to that also, like even with liquor compliance, something we're going to have more of a discussion on, but it's, it's just geared towards, you know, really trying to educate everyone, we're very pleased because everybody passed, but this, this one wouldn't have involved any citations, but we're also able to capture some money from DHS basically through this, this grant, if it's, if it's permitted, which would be the eight hundred dollars which would pay for, for the compliance.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, second.
We got a motion and a second offer resolution waived reading, any more discussion? See you none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five point three, resolution to support the MnDOT funding application for the expansion of Highway fourteen.
That was yours.
Steve?
Mr. President, city councilors, this resolution is to support MnDOT and their application for build, funding application to fund, I believe it's twenty-five million dollars in a federal grant, to help complete the eighty-five million dollar project to expand Highway fourteen between New Ulm and Niklet, their, MnDOT's thoughts are if they are awarded this federal grant, they would expedite construction within the next handful of years here and get that thing built out.
Thank you, Joe. Any more questions, concerns?
It will happen, it will happen.
It will happen.
It will, I didn't say when.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading to support the MnDOT build, build application to fund the proposed expansion of Highway fourteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second offer resolution waived reading, any more discussion? See you none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item four, or five point four, award bids for the rubber roof replacement of, at, at the library, Elwood?
Elwood's a building official, President Schmitz, councilors, this is a replacement of rubber roofing at the library, basically from the circulation decks going to Ulm North up to the new infill that was done in two thousand and five, the roof has been leaking intermittently and it's at its end-of-life use, and you can see, we've got two, two bids on it.
And you feel comfortable with the bid and...
I checked with, yep, I checked with, with the contractor, and everything was bid, same, same bid from the other, from the other contractor, everything was included.
Thank you.
I'll offer the motion to approve.
Second, we got a motion and a second to approve, the roof replacement, any more discussion?
I'm just nervous, one's a sixty-nine thousand dollar bid and one's a thirty-six thousand dollar bid, and we sure we got everything, Elwood, I'm nervous, it's a big difference.
Everything was included on the, the low bid, the other contractor is busy.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you, that's what happens when they're busy.
No more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Item five point five, Glockenspiel final replacements, that's Mr. Schmitz.
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Director, President Schmitz, and councilors, you have before you a request, that I plan to be the final and last request of replacements at the Glockenspiel, and that is to authorize thirty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars of funds budgeted for the Recreation Center boiler replacement project to be reallocated for the final seven figurine replacement and the control system replacement at the Glockenspiel, as you see in the budgetary fiscal issues, there is three hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred and forty dollars remaining in the boiler replacement project, that project came in significantly under budget, and the Glockenspiel replacement projects have come in a little bit over budget.
I got, I've got a question, a little confused on the capital improvement, if I stand, stand correctly, Nicole, finance, didn't we authorize using our two ninety funds to do this project?
Yes.
So, technically, we're not capital improvement, we're going to go back and ask, can we use more of our two ninety funds to supplement this income?
So the two ninety fund is there to help supple, or to help for city facility renovations and repairs and maintenance, in the past, we haven't typically used it for a lot of park and rec projects, but we allocated the million dollars out of there...
For the boiler replacement.
For the boiler project, even though that would have a huge drain on that fund, there is currently a little over two million dollars in that fund, and there, you know, there's always unexpected projects and, and large projects that may come up at some point.
So it's not three hundred and forty-eight thousand unspent dollars, it's, it's in our two ninety fund, all right.
I have a question, what did we authorize with the budget last year, did we authorize all of the figurines for this year, or did we hold off for some figurines next year?
My notes have four figurines and a controller.
Correct, yes.
And we had, I'm sorry, Tom, fifty thousand in for the controller and forty-five thousand in for the four figurines.
Correct, so there's seven remaining figurines, most of those are the nativity scene, so of those seven figurines, there's two very small ones, which is Baby Jesus and the Lamb, so I'm just recommending that we get this project done, we've normally been doing four per year, and this year, there would be five full-sized and two miniature-sized figurines.
And we would complete, then they would all be complete, but I would assume we have to start saving, because eventually, we got to start replacing them again.
Well, the original ones were basically kind of a paper mache, and they should have been replaced a decade, well, maybe two decades ago.
Wow.
We really patched and repaired those, and they were in, they weren't, they were not really maintainable, these new figurines are fiberglass and epoxy, they will outlast all of us.
Really, okay, that makes me feel...
There's nineteen total, nineteen total figurines, including Baby Jesus and the Lamb, which are two of, you know, the two small miniature figurines.
And all with the other councilors think, just getting uncomfortable now, we're using two ninety funds to replace figurines, in my mind, that's not maintenance, but we'll go ahead.
We have added to the two ninety fund the budget now, you know, we do that annual allocation into there most years, we've added a small portion for the ma, you know, for every year, for the Civic Center and the Glockenspiel, so they'll continue to add to that fund as well, or to calculate into what we need in that fund.
In other words, they're going to borrow from us? Okay.
Well, it is one of our main tourist destinations in our community, and it'd be nice to finally have that all looking appropriate, so I'm going to go ahead and offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? I guess I'm going to agree with Dave, I, I think we really need to watch where we're spending our money, we should stick to our budgets and stuff like that, and I'll support it, because I think it needs to be done, don't get me wrong, but I, I, I think we got to quit digging into our funds for things that aren't budgeted for, I mean, it could be put off till next year and get it done too, so are we really going to save anything this year by doing it, all in one project?
President Schmitz, Schmitz and councilors, I would say that normally, the cost of these repairs and replacements do increase on an annual basis.
Right, I know it's a tourist attraction, but we still got to kind of watch where we spend money on.
That's true.
Yeah, I think we, I think we turned it down in our budget, you know, we opted to hold off till next year to, to finish that project, I don't know what's changed in the philosophy, just because one project came in under budget, I'm not sure.
That's a little hiccup I got, but I know it needs to be done, and, but...
So yeah, whether we pay it now or we pay it on next year's budget.
Yeah, even if we save a few hundred, we save a few hundred, so, since we were going to do it next year anyway.
Any more discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's see, five, six, here, five point six.
Five point six.
Get it up here.
Set a public hearing date for noise variance for the New Ulm Small Business Group, and that's for Tuesday, July sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at four thirty P. M. Chris, get some on that one?
Yeah, so, Small Business Group would like to do a street dance on Minnesota Street, and so they're requesting a noise variance to have a band play, so they'll be going past the time of nine P. M. to midnight, you know, to me, I think it, it'll be a good event, and they are, there's the caveat that there will not be alcohol on the street for this event, it will be contained to the bars only, so that's one of the reasons why we're allowing this event to occur on, on, in the public right away, so I don't, I don't have any issues with, with this street closure and moving forward with setting the public hearing.
Thank you.
A motion to set the public hearing for Tuesday, July sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at four thirty P. M.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Items, the six point one, let's see, here we go. Claim, reported claims, accept a list of claims paid in amount of one million eight hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-six cents, and approve a list of claims to be paid in amount of one million nine hu, nine thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion, any, see you none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries, with no more business, meeting adjourned.